Recording in progress.
Okay, so let me get the plugs on the other side.
One more time.
All right. Good morning, all. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission hearing of June 1, 2023. Could the Secretary call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanlin?
Here.
Commissioner McPhail, absent. Commissioner Kessley, here. Vice Chair Garcia, here. Chair Boydston?
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance as you may.
Ready to begin. The Pledge of Allegiance is applied in the United States of America in a particular public religious sentence, for the nation, for the individual, for liberty and justice for all.
We will move on to public comments. This is time set aside for comments by citizens on matters not appearing on the agenda. Do we have any speakers?
There are no public comments.
Thank you. Moving on, approval of the minutes for the April 6, 2023 meeting. I think at talking with counsel that we should, because you and I weren't at the last meeting, and while I need to abstain, we'll move this item to when we have a full commission. With no objections.
Yeah.
Yep.
Commissioner Boydston, I was here, but I believe Commissioner, was it McPhail that was not here?
McPhail, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next, let's move on to item six. The project. The applicant is a county executive office CEO staff acting as program administrator of the County, Ventura County Climate Emergency Council, E.C.E.C. The applicant requests that the Planning Commission review and consider proposals from the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council requesting that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors create a policy to reduce GHG emissions from the new and existing county of Ventura-owned building facilities, and create a program to reduce carbon dioxide emissions from existing residential and non-residential building. Project location county-wide. Sequa document is N.A., and the county representative presenting the project will be Heather Allen. We're ready for your presentation. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Boydston and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Heather Allen, and I am a program administrator in the County Executive Office Sustainability Division. And I am acting as administrator of the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council. We also refer to it as the C.E.C. And I am joined today by Morel Vargas, and she is a Sustainability Division Program Specialist. Also, members of the public that are attending via Zoom, if you wish to speak, please press the raise hand button on Zoom now, and you will be connected at the appropriate time. If you're participating via telephone, please press the star button and then the nine button to be in the queue. And this is Agenda Number 6A, so. I am here today to request your review and consideration of proposals from the C.E.C. that request the County Board of Supervisors create a policy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from new and existing county-owned buildings and facilities. And to create a program to reduce carbon dioxide emissions from existing residential and non-residential buildings. But first, I wanted to provide some background information about the C.E.C. So this slide shows our current members. Five were appointed by each Board of Supervisor to represent their district, and we have one of our C.E.C. members here today. Three were appointed by the Board to represent our disadvantaged communities that are identified in the general plan. And then we have two at-large members that were selected by the other eight members of the C.E.C. So for the purpose of the C.E.C., it is to research, develop, and advise the Board regarding potential programs and policies to implement the CAP, the Climate Action Plan, and the general plan's GHG reduction strategy for the unincorporated areas of Ventura County. The programs and policies should result in quantifiable GHG emission reductions that furthers the county's progress towards achieving our 2030, 2040, and 2050 GHG emission reduction targets and goals. And regarding the presentation, the C.E.C. recommendations shall be presented to the Planning Commission at a public meeting for your review, consideration, and formulation of a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Then, the C.E.C. recommendations and the Planning Commission recommendations shall be presented to the Board at a public meeting for its review, consideration, and action. Okay, so a little bit about the relationship of the Climate Action Plan to the general plan. So there are 81 different CAP-related programs and 150 CAP-related policies in the general plan that make up the GHG reduction strategy. The GHG reduction strategy, along with the GHG emissions inventory, the GHG emissions reduction goals and targets, and the CAP adaptation strategy are all part of the Climate Action Plan. And then the general plan also serves as a Climate Action Plan. Next, I'd like to highlight some of the C.E.C.-related general plan goals, policies, and programs. These are also included in your staff report, Exhibit A. So first, we have goal COS-10. That's basically, we want to improve our long-term sustainability of the community through local efforts to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Policy COS-10-1 is we shall refer to the general plan and its integrated GHG reduction strategy as the county's comprehensive plan for reducing community-wide GHG emissions, again, in the unincorporated county. And then policies COS-10-2 and COS-10-3, that's more of our county-wide GHG emission reduction targets. So we have a target of 41% below 2015 levels and 2030. We have a target of 61% below 2015 levels by 2040. And last, our target is 80% below 2015 levels by 2050. And then further, program COS-CC. Again, that basically is a program that establishes a climate emergency council. And then we have program COS-LL, and that talks about the purpose of the C.E.C., which I've already mentioned, but is to recommend programs and implement policies that do not have associated implementation, excuse me, associated implementation programs already in the general plan. Okay, so why are we here today? It's to consider two of the C.E.C. recommendations. And the first, C.E.C. proposal for the Board of Supervisors to create a policy to reduce GHG emissions from new and existing county-owned buildings and facilities. And as written, this policy should support planning for moving towards electrification and decarbonization of new and existing county-owned buildings and facilities where feasible. And this should include support for electrification and decarbonizations of our buildings and facilities. And we should seek grants and other incentives for this purpose and reduce embodied carbon in our building materials. We should also proceed with the next steps in preparing for future electrification and decarbonization efforts. This includes building inventory and identification of grants and other funding opportunities. The Board should direct staff to return to them with budget requests as necessary to implement this policy. And we should also recognize county policies regarding cost effectiveness. They should be updated to provide flexibility for incorporation of these measures. And last, a willingness to consider having the general fund cover the higher costs of electrification and decarbonization measures. And just so we all have an understanding of some of the terms that I used in the proposal, or that the C.E.C. used in the proposal and that I just spoke to. Decarbonization prevents GHG emissions through the use of zero-carbon renewable energy sources such as solar. And then embodied carbon, that represents carbon emissions that are released during the life cycle of building materials. And this includes extraction, manufacturing, transport, construction, and disposal. Okay, so for some of our staff observations, yes, it can be expected that electrification and decarbonization of the new and existing county buildings and facilities, you know, that will reduce the use of natural gas and propane and reducing embodied carbon in building materials. This will all reduce GHG emissions. However, the proposed language as written, it doesn't provide specific direction with respect to moving towards electrification and decarbonization of our buildings and facilities. Thus, to the extent which the proposal would result in specific quantifiable GHG emission reductions, it's a little unclear. And Sustainability and General Services Agency staff, the proposal, we have no concerns about it because it kind of reiterates some of our ongoing county activities. For example, the county conducts energy audits of our county-owned facilities and buildings. And we do this to analyze the opportunities for installation of energy-efficient measures, solar arrays, and battery storage. And we also install these energy-efficient technologies such as, as you see in our parking lot, onsite and offsite solar. We always track and apply for grants, incentives, and partnership opportunities for installing these energy-efficient and electrification measures, also solar arrays and battery storage at our county-owned buildings and facilities. The C.E.C. proposal also appears to kind of reiterate existing language that's already in the general plan, specifically policy PFS-21, that's Sustainable Plans and Operations. And that policy states that the county shall encourage energy efficiency, GHG reduction features, and resiliency planning into county facilities, service plans, and operations. The proposal also appears to repeat some of the language that's stated in general plan program COST, Energy Consumption Performance. And that program states that the county should continue to review its energy consumption performance and implement programs designed to increase energy efficiency in our county-owned buildings and facilities. This includes, was not limited to, the development of an energy audit and energy management programs, and to investigate new technologies such as solar and fuel cells. And staff believes this proposal is consistent with the goals, policies, and programs that are in the general plan. However, as noted, the proposal may be duplicative of existing general plan policies, programs, and our other ongoing county efforts. So if the Board were to choose to adopt the proposal, then the Board should direct staff to proceed with processing a general plan amendment. Now for the second proposal. And that's to create a program to reduce carbon dioxide emissions from existing residential and non-residential buildings. And it recommends that the county develop and implement a program to promote the voluntary retrofit electrification of existing residential and non-residential buildings in the unincorporated county. And they should do this by strengthening and expanding the existence, or existing 3C RIN, which is the Tri-County Regional Energy Network, energy efficiency, and electrification programs, and incorporate funding opportunities contained in the new Inflation Reduction Act. The goals of the program are to reduce natural gas-related carbon dioxide emissions from these existing buildings. And that's in line with the general plan's 2030, 2040, and 2050 GHG emission reduction targets. The program, which would strengthen and expand existing efforts, would be housed in the CEO Sustainability Division. And additional staff would be needed to support the program, particularly for educational, promotional, and outreach efforts. The program would continue to identify grants and other incentives to help finance the implementation of energy efficiency and electrification retrofits, and would communicate these incentives and the county's climate goals to building owners and residents to encourage voluntary electrification efforts. And next, for some observations. Again, it can be reasonably expected that promoting the voluntary retrofit electrification of existing residential and non-residential buildings, there will be a reduction in the use of natural gas and propane, and that will result in GHG emission reductions. But again, the proposal is subject to choices by building owners and operators to implement electrification and decarbonization efforts. And it cannot be stated with certainty that the proposal would result in reducing GHG emissions. The C.E.C. proposal appears to possess a level of redundancy with the general plan policy program COSV, which is to improve energy conservation and awareness. And that program states that the county shall encourage community members to conserve energy, reduce GHG emissions, increase awareness about energy efficiency, climate change, and adaptation. And we conduct target outreach to encourage installation of electric appliances as opposed to natural gas appliances and heaters. And that program talks about providing information regarding financial incentives. The county also has ongoing educational, promotional, and outreach efforts conducted by CEO staff. Again, this is through the 3C RIN program. We deliver programs that reduce energy use and offer contractors incentives for energy-saving home improvements. And we support residential electrification by providing tools, support, and resources. And then through another program in the Sustainability Division, which is the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance, CEO staff identifies and promotes existing non-residential and residential energy programs that are administered by the utilities, like S.C.E. and Clean Power Alliance. And we track and apply for grants, incentives, and partnerships opportunities for installing energy efficiency and electrification measures, as well as solar and battery storage in the residential and non-residential buildings. So staff believes this proposal is also consistent with the goals, policies, and programs that are identified in the general plan. However, again, there may be some redundancy between the proposal and existing general plan program COSV and ongoing county outreach efforts. And if the Board chooses to adopt this proposal, the Board should direct staff to proceed with processing a general plan amendment. For next steps, the Board of Supervisors' hearing to consider the C.E.C. proposals and the Planning Commission recommendations is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, September 12, 2023. And staff recommendations are to receive and file a report and presentation from staff regarding these two C.E.C. proposals, provide a recommendation by minute order to the County Board of Supervisors regarding a C.E.C. request for the Ventura County Board of Supervisors to create a policy to reduce GHG emissions from new and existing county-owned buildings and facilities. And last is to provide a recommendation by minute order to the County Board of Supervisors regarding a C.E.C. request for the County Board of Supervisors to create a program to reduce carbon dioxide emissions from existing residential and non-residential buildings. And then lastly, I just wanted to note that we did receive one public comment via email that I think was shared with y'all last night that was in support of the C.E.C. proposals. Again, I'm here for any questions you may have.
First of all, I think this is a great initiative for the county of Ventura. And I have two questions. Does the county currently have a program like this for vehicles and other assets? Or is just currently this initiative for the county-owned buildings and non-residential and residential?
Commissioner Sanlin? Yes, we do. Are you referring to electrified transportation?
Yeah, vehicles and other assets, yes.
We have a whole regional electric vehicle EV blueprint that we work with all of our cities to encourage electrification of vehicles as well as installation of charging infrastructure. And the county actually has a grant with the Energy Commission. And so we have an EV coach that's here covered for a three-year time period to be a resource for all of our residents and cities, businesses, to help with anything regarding electric vehicles, our charging infrastructure. And we also apply for incentives to install charging infrastructure, both for the fleet as well as public. And we're a resource, and we share this information and give lots of EV 101s to our residents and businesses and cities so that we'll get more EVs and charging infrastructure.
That's great. Is there a goal deadline when all county vehicles will be electrified?
They are, I do not want to speak to that. I don't know, I don't work in fleet. But as opportunities come available for especially incentives and for vehicles and charging infrastructures, a lot of the fleet staff and the county staff work together to take advantage of these and put in new charging infrastructure for both fleet and public. And so we actually have, I believe, about 10, maybe, well, 10 programs. Five are in the works with S.C.E. to put in charging infrastructure at various county facilities. And I know that fleet likes to, when they put in a new charging station that's for fleet vehicles, that goes along with purchasing a new electric vehicle.
Great. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Commissioner.
I was hoping to just maybe get a little bit more clarity on the role we have in this and what is the expectation for the outcome of our deliberations today.
Commissioner Kessley? So the role of the Planning Commission is for y'all to provide a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And then we will present the C.E.C.'s recommendation along with the Planning Commission's recommendation to the Board. So you could change the wording of the program, the proposed program and policy if you would like. Or you can move it forward as is, or you can make a different recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. I had a question in terms of, is there already an analysis or estimates, perhaps that aren't presented here, as far as what this would, where this falls in the range of spectrum of strategies that would generate reductions in GHG? In GHG, like, do we already kind of have a picture of what measures would have the most impact in GHG reductions? Do we kind of know what, where, how significant and important this is in that spectrum of potential measures?
So regarding most cities and counties, their GHG inventories, most of the greenhouse gas emissions are associated with the transportation sector as well as the built environment. And then waste is also a good chunk of GHG emissions. So electrifying buildings and facilities and not using natural gas or propane will reduce greenhouse gas emissions and could have a pretty good impact. The analysis for county facilities, I don't think that's exactly been done. And this proposal, it's a good proposal, but it doesn't have the actual, like, metrics that you can run that analysis. It just doesn't have the specific language that you could figure out the exact GHG emission reductions because the language is, you know, if feasible, it doesn't have a direct, it doesn't have direct language for activity metrics to put in an equation to reduce GHG emissions. But the intent of it, it could reduce GHG emissions.
But if we were to recommend the program, would that be one of the outcomes? To develop the metrics and measurements for what this, how this would impact GHG reductions to actually quantify that?
You could add that to a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Boydston and Planning Commissioners.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, we have one speaker, Todd Collard.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Todd Collard. I live here in Ventura. I guess I'm targeting myself an impatient climate activist. I've read the report, and I think on balance, it's a good proposal, something we should be doing, electrifying or decarbonizing buildings, county-owned buildings and others in the county. And it is a big, fat producer of greenhouse gases. The question is, how do you measure how effective it could be with these proposals? And obviously, it's uncertain if it's a voluntary measure for residents' buildings throughout the county. throughout the county. But I found the, as much as I support this, I found the recommendations in the staff report confusing. First off, it's the CEC's recommendations, and they don't call for a general plan amendment. They just call for these policy and a policy and a program. And those are based on, reiterated on pages one through four. On pages five through eight, the CEO's office says suddenly, this is not the CEO, CEC recommendation, it's now converted to their interpretation of it, my stake on it, and that this requires a general plan amendment. And I find forcing this whole measure, this whole proposal through the general plan amendment process wasteful of time and energy when we need to be making real progress. General plan amendment process, as you may already know, is long, time-consuming of staff. And in this case, CEC staff, support staff is saying that the proposal is redundant of what's already in the goals and policies and programs of the cap program. So I'm left wondering what we're supposed to do here, and particularly you. What's your, what's your action? Are you going to go with the CEC proposal, give us a policy? Or with the CEO's staff saying, give us a policy, but it has to be done through the adoption of a general plan amendment, which if I'm not mistaken, you only do three times a year, and this could take a year to maybe get through the process from this point forward. So I guess I'm baffled how this is going to work out. More power to you, how you do it. But I just think that somehow the board needs to adopt some omnibus language, a directive to everybody to say, get to work, don't quibble about what things, what you're doing specifically. Everything's going to fit under the general goal of reducing greenhouse gases and producing adaptation measures that actually help us get through this crisis. And with that, maybe you wouldn't have the tendency to try to create more refined, detailed, and maybe redundant policies as the CEO staff is saying this proposal amounts to. So as a climate activist, I'm fully supportive of reducing greenhouse gases. As a former planner and working with commissioners, the idea of sending things through the general plan process to amend it and getting it established, to me, seems burdensome and unnecessary, time-consuming, and just not why we're here. We need to be out making changes, turn off the gas and stop burning things. As to the, say, the policy on electrification of vehicles, I didn't hear the staff say, there is a policy set by the board that henceforth, by exception only, will all of our vehicles be electric. I don't know if there's such a policy. That's where I'm thinking they should be coming from. You get electric vehicles unless you can demonstrate that that's infeasible. It might be infeasible because you don't have the charging facilities, but there are grants and so forth to get that. But I don't see default policies in place saying, we're moving this way and not staying in the past with fossil fuels. So, see, I'm impatient. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I think we have one more, at least one more speaker.
And then we have two on Zoom.
Did you submit a card?
I don't have a card. Can I get a card? Okay, you go ahead, and I'll get a card.
We have David Gilbertson.
Well, good morning. First off, thank you for your service to our community as commissioners and to the staff and their hard work. My comments aren't necessarily going to be really specific about the proposed action for the board. I do agree with this gentleman that there's a real sense of urgency here. I appreciate very much the volunteer work that the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council commissioners do, and I think it's really important to support them as staff, as Board of Commissioners. This work is vital, in my judgment. And I see this body, the Planning Commission here, as well as the Board of Supervisors, being leaders across Ventura County. I'm a resident of Camarillo, and your leadership is so important to guide our city council members as well as the Planning Commission members. You're ahead of many of the cities in Ventura County on a climate action plan. That being said, let's get busy and implement. So I think maybe this comment would be something, I don't know if you would want to amend any language, but I think it's imperative that all levels of county government, staff, and appointees to commissions and committees rapidly work to reduce greenhouse gas emissions produced by the county operations within its jurisdiction while simultaneously adopting a, adapting to a swiftly changing climate. I suspect you're familiar with the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change in its recent 2023 report. Basically, it says there's no time to lose to keep the target of limiting global average temperature below 1.5 degrees centigrade. There is a rapidly closing window of opportunity to secure a livable and sustainable future for all. Ventura County is experiencing the effects of climate change now, and this is data from the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration that shows Ventura County has experienced seven of its warmest years on record since 2013. Pollution from buildings is one of the largest sources of climate emissions in our communities, and that pollution carries significant public health risks. What is the good news? Federal Government Inflation Reduction Act funding. I would hope that all the commissioners here and Board of Supervisors and every city council and every planning commission is busy now working with staff to identify, how can we implement Inflation Reduction Act funding to help support our climate action plans? $10 billion from the IRA in consumer home energy rebate programs, $200 million to train contractors in electrification and efficiency, $27 billion for a Green Bank Tech Accelerator. I think one thing that you could be looking at is how can we provide technical expertise for the Climate Emergency Council and staff to help implement these programs? The Inflation Reduction Act funding has the potential to materially transform the U.S. economy and to significantly contribute to greenhouse gas reduction efforts. Here's the deal: local governments will be central to these efforts, as they'll be responsible for many of the projects the IRA application ultimately will fund. Lastly, I think this is also an important role for the Planning Commission as well as our Board of Supervisors. The question I have is, is the county develops its budget for the upcoming year, is our county prioritizing its resources to leverage federal funding on climate? I would hope so. It should be a priority for every department. It should be a priority for every individual working for the county as well as every city. So let's get busy. I think our children and grandchildren will thank us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Phil White. I live in Ojai. I am a member of the Ventura County Climate Emergency Council, though I'm appearing as an individual today. I'm not authorized to speak for the council. I'm here to support the recommendations of the Climate Emergency Council to illustrate what we're dealing with. Maybe Heather could put up a couple of graphics. I was a planning commissioner and worked with Commissioner Kessley and others between 2017 and 2021 on the update of the general plan, the 2040 general plan. And one of the things I'm most proud of is that we incorporated a climate action plan within the general plan. And the goals of the climate action plan, if we look on the screen there, and Heather mentioned this, but I think it's instructive to look at this. The solution to climate change is to reduce carbon dioxide and other greenhouse gases in the atmosphere. And the goals of Ventura County adopted by the board in the general plan are the same percentage reductions that the state adopted. And those are 41% below 2015 levels by 2030, which is coming right up, 61% below 2015 levels by 2040, and 80% below 2015 levels by 2050. Some really big reductions. And those, the goals are shown as the black line there. That's where we need to be to meet the state and county goals on greenhouse gas emissions in the county. The blue line is where we are projected to be. This is all out of the, out of the general plan information. Incorporating all of the policies and programs that are contained in the general plan, climate action plan, plus what the state's doing, plus what the federal government is doing, are insufficient to get us down to that black line, to get sufficient reductions in order to achieve our goals and get us on target for doing Ventura County's share. Could you put up the other graphic, please? Here we go. This is the pie chart that shows where Ventura County's emissions come from. This is calculated for 2015. The orange piece of pie there is transportation, a little over a third of the emissions. Buildings are responsible for about 17%. Other stationary sources, including industry, 16%. Agriculture, the green piece, 13%. Solid waste, 17%. So these are the areas of emissions that need to be addressed. And the goal is to shrink this pie, to make this pie smaller wherever we can. And again, I want to emphasize the climate action plan and all the measures, all the policies and programs contained in the climate action plan are insufficient to meet the goals. We need to do more. And as a member of the Climate Emergency Council, we're looking at making recommendations for things that are not already in the general plan, climate action plan. And the two proposals that are before you today are two of those things that are not included in the general plan. Yes, there are some redundancies and similarities with other policies and programs, but these are two things that aren't really in there and should be in there because we need to find additional greenhouse gas emission reduction measures. You ask Commissioner Garcia, you asked for some numbers, and you know, hopefully this helps on identifying it. Both of these policies refer to the blue piece of pie there, building energy. In the case of, of existing buildings in Ventura County, where we would be, in trying to reduce the emissions from existing buildings in Ventura County, we're dealing with that 17%. And the program, the proposed program to have the CEO's office, Sustainability Division in the CEO's office, have a program to enable building owners, homeowners, business owners to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions and to educate them, to point to sources of funding. Like David said, the Inflation Reduction Act, there's a lot of money out there that's going to be made available to individuals, homeowners and business owners to electrify their buildings. This would be a program within the CEO's office that expands on what they're already doing. They're doing a great job in this program called 3C RIN, which is, encourages energy efficiency in buildings, particularly residential buildings. So it would be an expansion of that program and focused specifically on reducing greenhouse gas emissions by electrifying buildings and reducing natural gas that's consumed. So that's, that's the proposed program for existing buildings with respect to the proposed policy for electrifying counties' facilities like this building. County has many, many buildings. Let's see. County buildings can produce 6,400 metric tons of carbon dioxide per year. It's a, it's a huge amount. You asked Commissioner Sanlin about policies for electrification of vehicles, and there is a policy. In July of 2019, the Board of Supervisors approved a policy that directed county staff to purchase electric vehicles and hybrid vehicles wherever possible to that that be the priority for, for the vehicle fleet in Ventura County. And I know the General Services Agency is working to electrify the fleet. You could argue they need to do it more quickly, that they need to have more chargers. All of those things are happening. So this, this proposed policy for county facilities, county buildings, is analogous to what, what the board already did for vehicles, to say it's the policy of the board to electrify the county fleet. It should also be the policy of the county to electrify wherever possible, where feasible, the county's buildings. That policy does not exist. There are opportunities that the county has. For example, heating, ventilating, air conditioning systems, HVAC systems that burn natural gas can be converted to heat pumps to provide both heating and cooling at essentially the same cost as replacing with gas-fired equipment. I believe, we believe that if the county had a policy to convert to to convert to all electric systems wherever possible, wherever feasible, that would be the right thing to do, just like going to electric vehicles is the right thing to do. As to whether, now, what should you guys do? In my opinion, having been on the Planning Commission, I'm sure you wonder what's the right thing to do. In my opinion, we don't need a general plan amendment to do this. Would agree with what Todd had to say there. In July of 2019, when the board adopted the policy to electrify vehicles, it was not a general plan amendment made with that. As Mr. Collard says, you know, we need to get going on this. We shouldn't waste the time going through the very complicated process of a general plan amendment. If I were on the commission, I think I would vote to receive and file and pass on the Climate Emergency Council's recommendations to the board and not recommend a general plan amendment. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I really appreciate what you guys do. It's a great public service. I had a really good time working on the Planning Commission. I'm sure you all do, too. It's a very satisfying public service thing to do.
Thank you, Phil. Any questions? Commissioner?
Great presentation. I have one question. What is not feasible right now? Has that been calculated from the CEC? Is there, we have a word feasible in there, and I'm wondering, you guys determined some things would not be feasible. What is not feasible at this point?
You know, the word where feasible is our two little words that get put into general plan policies and programs regularly, which kind of gives you an out, gives the staff and the government an out to not really do it if they have a good argument not to. In the case of electrifying buildings, some things are more cost-effective than others. I gave the example of HVAC systems that burn gas and also provide air conditioning. Those can be replaced readily with heat pumps and get rid of the natural gas. That's pretty much an even cost either way. That's certainly feasible to do. If you look at this building, the boilers required for heating the space are large natural gas-fired boilers. To replace a gas boiler is more challenging. It's possible. It can be done. Heat pumps for producing hot water and steam are available and are certainly being implemented around the world. It's more complicated, more challenging. When you put the words where feasible in there, I think it gives the county staff and, for example, the General Services Agency who deal with buildings, gives them the option to do an analysis and say, well, on this particular building, we could change these systems to be all electric, but it might cost this much and come back to the board with a budget item to fund it. There's not a clear, black and white answer to it. Some things are easy, some things are more challenging. Everything can be done.
Yeah, I'd love to see some kind of analysis of what's feasible and what's not feasible. As you mentioned, by putting that word in there, it does give an out, whether it's buildings, transportation. Buildings and transportation look like more than 50% of the cause of greenhouse gases in the county. And if there's a feasible language in there, then it looks like there would be an out of getting things done.
I don't disagree with you. To make it a mandate would be a much tougher sell, both in terms of the Climate Emergency Council and the board, frankly. To write a blank check saying, absolutely, let's electrify everything tomorrow. They're not ready to do that, I don't think.
The governor's got plans for vehicles, I think. In 2035, all the diesel vehicles have to be electrified. And that's a mandate that we all face coming up pretty soon, too, as well.
Thank you.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Phil.
Thank you. And again, thank you for your service.
Are there any more speakers that are in the House?
We have two, Francis Lee and Haley Ellers. They're on Zoom.
Okay.
Hello, commissioners. Thank you very much for taking my comments.
You're very hard and low to hear.
A proposal for policies and programs that can reduce greenhouse gases from buildings.
Francis, we can't hear you.
Oh. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Very faintly.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me now? Hello?
We still can't hear you clearly.
Oh. Sorry. I don't know if you can hear me now. Sorry. Okay.
Can you try adjusting your volume?
Yeah. Yeah, that's about as high as it goes. Can you hear me? Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe you need to go on to the next speaker. Sorry. That's all I can do.
Oh, Francis, your mic's not working very well.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Next, we have Haley Ellers.
Hi. Can you hear me okay? I could hear Francis fine on Zoom, so I just want to make sure.
We're not getting clear audio in here.
I don't have the chat.
Is it a technical issue on our side?
Let me know if you can, or when I should start. Can you hear me now?
We can. Thank you.
Oh, perfect. Okay, I'll get started. Hello, my name is Haley Ellers. I'm the Director of Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas, or CFROG, a nonprofit dedicated to the transition away from fossil fuels to a carbon-free future in Ventura County. We support the county of Ventura moving forward with creative and swift building electrification and pollution reduction efforts to reduce building energy-related emissions. In 2015, building energy made up 17% of greenhouse gas emissions in the county, the second most behind transportation and tied with solid waste. The Climate Action Plan, or CAP, was implemented with the goal of reducing these emissions by 41% by 2030, only seven years away. As detailed in the staff report for this agenda item, the county must implement additional programs and policies than those already included in the CAP to meet this goal. As you know, the Climate Emergency Council has been tasked with recommending these additional programs and policies. CFROG has publicly expressed concerns to the county on the effectiveness of this current process, where volunteer community members are expected to identify, quantify, and write policies and programs to be approved and implemented by the county. We support the recent discussion the council had to recommend receiving paid staff support, ideally from an expert consultant in emission reduction techniques. In the staff report, it says that these policies may be reiterative of other general plan policies and goals, but there's no detail explaining the actual progress made on or the quantitative impact of these already existing programs. In fact, according to general plan policy COSZ, the county should have prepared a public report on the quantitative results of the greenhouse gas strategy implementation and monitoring in September 2022, two years after it was adopted in 2020. Based on our review, this report has not been published. Quickly hearing, or sorry, quickly getting fossil fuels out of our buildings, both new and existing, should be a priority for Ventura County. The all-electric building code implemented in 2022 for new construction was a great and essential first step, but we must continue to grow impact. Gas appliances generate a variety of air pollutants harmful to human health. Natural gas is primarily made up of methane, a greenhouse gas with immense atmospheric warming potential, which continues to be cited by climate scientists as an emission we need to cut now. Not to mention, the fossil fuel industry's continued facade to promote natural gas over the choice communities are making to move away from the harmful pollutant by spending millions on lawsuits and referendum campaigns across the country. Ventura County must continue to choose to protect our climate and household safety and that of county staff in their workplaces. If you do choose to forego these recommendations of the CEC, you must place measurable, time-specific, and assigned milestones on the, quote, reaffirmation of the county's commitment to address climate change through the pre-existing Building Electrification General Plan policies. What exactly does this mean? We need action on both the programs and policies already prioritized by our community in the general plan and those that are currently missing, such as these recommendations, that are essential to meet our reduction goals and address the climate emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Is Francis still around?
Francis? Oh, no, I don't see her on the list. Oh, she's back.
Yes, can you hear me?
Welcome back, yes.
Yes.
Oh, hey, good. Thank you. I was just saying thank you to the commission and for all your work. And thank you to all the speakers. I'm really happy to have heard from Phil, partially, you know, just his personal input as well as his role on CEC. I also want to thank Heather for her report and for her work with the Sustainability Division. And I want these proposals to go through, you know, for what we're doing for transportation right now is what we need for buildings, to electrify buildings. And I think there are a lot of programs coming out there for homeowners and hopefully for residents that live in apartment buildings. But there's nothing there for the county buildings. And I agree with what Phil said, that there needs to be some kind of policy that, you know, really, really brings on these greenhouse gas emission goals. What these programs are saying right now is that it is voluntary, but the funding that we need is lacking. And when the Inflation Reduction Act came along just recently, it provided a huge amount of money for all of us, and it's a game changer. And, yeah, we need to take it up on, you know, like, use that. And the problem is, many people don't know about it. And even though 3C RIN is out there and all the, you know, programs that they're speaking about, is the common person doesn't know about it. The people that really need replacing of these appliances in their homes so that they can live a healthier life, they can, you know, have electrification that is cheaper than gas in a very volatile situation that we've seen in the past. Yeah, we need these things to go faster and stronger. Yeah, that's got to be our goal, all of us. Whether we do it, I guess, through this general plan, I just have to go with Phil's recommendation that we just, you know, the proposals can be done without an amendment, and Todd, so that we don't waste time because we need to really act quickly for, you know, all the climate conditions that we've been seeing. So that's just my general take. The, you know, it's kind of like we're seeing a competing idea coming from the Sustainability Division, you know, and what the CEC is supposed to be doing to advise the general, or sorry, the Board of Supervisors. And, yeah, I just want to see something streamlined and quick so we can actually see some action in this area. And I think we need a really, really strong proposal in the community that these Inflation Reduction Act funds are there for everyone and for the county to leverage everything in their incentives and funding. So I'm, you know, good luck to you in choosing that path, but I think the simpler one has got to be the best one. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no other speakers.
Okay, seeing that, would staff like to make any closing statement?
Chair Boydston and Planning Commissioners, I do not really have anything to add, but I believe in order to add a policy and a program to the Climate Action Plan, it would trigger a general plan amendment. That's why that recommendation is added. Thank you very much.
Counsel?
Good morning, Chair Boydston, Commissioners. I'm Francesca Verdean, County Council, Assistant County Council. I think that, you know, that certainly could be incorporated into your recommendations to the Board of Supervisors, should you desire, to just look into that and to evaluate whether the proposals could be implemented without a general plan amendment with the existing policies and programs within the general plan.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing at this point and open it up to the commission for discussion and/or a motion. Yes.
I think that it would be really helpful if I can get somebody to give me a definition of what it means to create a policy as opposed to what is already existing in the general plan, in the Climate Action Plan. If we adopt a policy, what does that specifically mean?
So I'd like to defer that question to our planning staff, if they're available to answer that question. to answer that question, to explain, just in the general plan, the general framework of a goal, policies, and implementing programs for you.
Chair Boydston, members of the Commission, good morning. I'm Susan Curtis, the Assistant Director of the Planning Division. The general plan is structured on first guiding principles. There's several guiding principles that guide how that general plan is going to effectuate the vision articulated in that general plan. And then those guiding principles become touchstones for the goals and policies in the general plan. And those goals are really overarching, maybe, that 10,000-foot level. And then the policies articulate how you're going to achieve those goals. And then the programs in the general plan, those function as an implementation tool. And so, for instance, for discretionary development, the policy is achieved through the actual process of permitting a development and then also potentially conditioning that development to comply with certain items. There's other policies that may need implementation programs. For instance, the Climate Action Plan has numerous implementation programs to effectuate those policies and ultimately that goal, and then ultimately that guiding principle for climate change in the general plan, if that's helpful.
If you do set a policy specifically with the recommendations that are before us, does that leave that opening for other opportunities? What happens if things, if it isn't still feasible in 2030, 2040, 2050 to electrify all the buildings, specifically the government buildings? As I had an opportunity to listen to General Services Agency Director Dave Sessick, who had some concerns regarding implementing a policy. And I just want to make sure that I have clarity on what that means.
So the policy, depending on how it's structured, would require the county consider and contemplate that policy, if it's a policy that requires county adherence. And the, if feasible, caveat in that policy would require that we determine in that process the feasibility of applying that policy for that particular issue, whether it be new construction or existing construction, or existing buildings.
And then I would assume that you would be taking into the account the costs associated with it and the complexities in making that conversion, such as the cost of electricity, how that could potentially increase significantly, especially, I think he referred to the three county buildings, Todd Jailhouse, the hospital, and this particular building, or this particular campus. And in addition to that, he also pointed out, you know, the difficulties and the challenges and the complexities of making that kind of a conversion, and that he was concerned that setting a policy and a target that may not be obtainable could create issues for the county and costs. And so he wanted to make sure, although he's not a policy-setting person, he wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that it could provide to be a challenge. And I just want to make sure I understood correctly what he was stating.
I think just in larger context of policy development, the term "if feasible," sometimes that's defined, and there's defined criteria on what determines feasibility, and sometimes it's not defined. And so I think that's maybe what you're getting into, and it's, for me, it's premature to maybe comment on that, but that's one mechanism, I suppose, if you wanted to sort of identify what would be the criteria for feasibility, that may be something that could be potentially integrated into that concept of the policy. And I do have Shelley Sussman here, the General Plan Implementation Manager, and if Shelley would like to add anything to any of these items I'm discussing, I would invite her to do so.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Shelley Sussman, Manager of the General Plan Implementation Section. And I would just add to what, am I talking too loud, to what Susan was saying, the general plan articulates various ways that policies are implemented. Some of them are through budgets, some of them are through regulations, some of them, you know, I have the list here, are through just kind of standard operating procedures for various agencies and departments. I think the term "if feasible" is often meant to capture those financial feasibility questions. We also, I think, can use the term or refer to the term "if feasible" when we're talking about, does a technology exist, for example, to assist in the implementation of a particular policy? So rather than, in a policy framework, kind of get into the nitty-gritty of what feasibility means in a given context, it's usually just "if feasible," and it captures a wide range of feasibility, including financial feasibility. I would say, just from a procedural perspective, when you're talking about adding a policy to the general plan, you know, it's a public process, right? And I think that's part of the issues that folks have commented on in terms of kind of the lengthy process, you know, it's transparent, it's public, and so the process requires that we go out to the public, the public has a chance to weigh in on a policy language and intent, it goes through your planning commission, it goes through the board, and all of those processes take some time. I think perhaps the planning commission and, of course, the board can have a policy outside of the general plan. For example, the way they did, apparently, for the electric vehicles. It didn't require a general plan amendment because there wasn't a general plan policy related to, directly related to, thou shalt buy electric vehicles unless it's infeasible. And so there was no policy for them to come and amend. So it's just, you know, a practice that the board has directed for GSA and Fleet Services to favor the purchase of electric vehicles. And presumably, the board could make some sort of policy statement, like they have done for health and all policies, for example, and other topics, where the board can articulate its preferences and its vision outside of, you know, a discrete general plan policy. Does that help?
Thank you. Helpful, yes.
Just some comments about following up on that discussion. I think that, so even though that specific explicit policy doesn't exist in the general plan, the overarching goal does exist. So this proposed, this proposal is essentially implementing the broader vision that's already stated in the general plan. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that. And I think that gets effectuated, again, through budgets, right, which come to the planning commission, or come to the board, are developed annually by every agency, and every agency has spent a fair amount of time making sure that the budgets reflect their commitments in the general plan and their policy and program implementation specifically. And, you know, the way programs are identified timewise in the general plan is by typically five-year increments. So you may see a budget document that reflects initiation of a general plan program that has a 2020 to 2025 implementation timeframe. And, you know, agencies are looking at those programs for which they have responsibility and determining where in that timeframe they're going to initiate work on that program.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify my comments on feasibility and what I meant by us looking at the feasibility aspect is truly tied to the biggest bang for the buck for what we have available, to ensure that it may be feasible, but we can reduce more greenhouse gas emissions with this strategy versus this strategy. So definitely constrained by budgets and what the biggest bang for the buck is for the budget.
Did you have additional, Commissioner Garcia?
Oh, I was just, I wanted to touch on the comment about feasibility, which I think what was just explained is, what we're talking, trying to understand is what's going to have an impact and what's going to have the largest impact. I would hope that the CEC is looking at, I mean, there are calculators out there, like the California Air Resources Board, where we can quantify what measures will generate GHG reductions and then bring those recommendations forward. So I hope that the CEC is looking at those opportunities and bringing those forward. So thank, just wanted to express my gratitude to the CEC for the group's work. And I'd also like to make a motion, but I don't know if there are questions.
Any more discussion? Commissioner?
I would like to just make a comment, only because, coming from a lot of experience as a landlord and understanding a lot of the complexities that could surround all of this, and appreciating the comments I've heard today and the work of the CEC and staff's recommendations, I'm troubled with the wording of eliminating things. Because when you target one specific thing to eliminate it completely and go to one specific target of, we'll call it electrification, how much opportunity is missed if there's an opportunity to work together, and I'm going to use the example with oil and gas, to find ways to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, working together, as opposed to eliminating one resource which has been very valuable and has helped us get to where we are today, and looking only towards electrification as the answer, when we know the grid doesn't really have the capacity to handle what we may dump in it by 2030? And are we missing opportunities in the wording of all of this? And that's my comment for consideration.
I guess prior to you making a motion, I would just like to say thank you for everyone that has come and spoken to us today. I guess my main take on this is that there is an emergency and this does need to move quickly. And I would just urge, whatever the process is to get these things implemented or documented as policy, get done very quickly. And we don't put up roadblocks and slow down the process, because that's exactly what we don't want to do. Having said that, I'm all for transparency and getting more input as this thing molds itself into something more concrete, hopefully. So I'm sort of torn between the two, because I think discussion breeds, brings with it new ideas. And, but I also still fall back that we need to push this thing along. So that would be my comment. Yes, Commissioner?
I would just like to follow up on Maggie's comment. She brings up a really good point. You know, if we say electrification, that could eliminate things like hydrogen or other technologies that are out there that could be a resource for, you know, the county that is zero emissions or reduces significantly the greenhouse gas emissions. So I think that we should take her comment in consideration in the motion.
If I could...
Go ahead.
If I could respond to that. So I don't see any, in terms of the actual language in the proposal, I don't see that there's a request to eliminate gas. The language is to, if I'm understanding correctly, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from new and existing county of Ventura-owned buildings and facilities, and also to reduce carbon dioxide emissions. So I think that has enough flexibility built in the language, because that's not outright, this isn't a policy that's outright eliminating or banning specific sources like gas, natural gas. Am I understanding that correctly, staff? And in terms of missed opportunities, I think it would be a missed opportunity to not move forward with these programs, because there are incentives available that can offset the cost of renewable energy, solar panels, and other resources that the county could tap if this policy is implemented. The sooner that we start, the more likely we might be able to capitalize on incentives that could reduce the cost of electrification for certain county facilities.
Any further discussion? I guess we're ready for your motion.
Oh, okay. I would like to, I would like to make a motion to adopt, so to receive and file a report and presentation from staff regarding the two CEC recommended proposals, and recommend by minute order to the Board of Supervisors regarding the CEC request to create a policy to reduce GHG emissions from new and existing county of Ventura-owned buildings and facilities, and to recommend by minute order to the Ventura County Board of Supervisors regarding the CEC request for the board to create a program to reduce carbon dioxide emissions from existing residential and non-residential buildings.
Okay. Do we have a second? I would ask the maker of the motion if she would consider adding the question to the board of whether, to look into whether a general plan amendment was actually necessary.
Okay, yeah. I would agree to add the question of whether a general plan amendment is necessary to effectuate the programs and the recommended policies.
Do we have a second? I'll second the motion. We have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by myself. Could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sandlin? Commissioner McPhail?
Absent.
Commissioner Kestley?
No.
Vice Chair Garcia?
Yes.
Chair Boydston?
Yes. So we have, that motion passes, three yeses, one no, one absent. Okay, we'll move on to discussion item seven, which is the Planning Director's Report.
Thank you, Commissioner Boydston, members of the board. We just have one item to give you today, which is the upcoming Planning Commission hearings for July. You will be hearing on July 13th an appeal for emergency use authorization permit for the Old Creek Ranch Winery. You will also be hearing that same day, asking for your consideration of county-initiated non-substantive amendments of the county general plan in consideration of a finding of adoption that these amendments are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act on July, and you don't have anything for June, by the way. Yes, we don't have anything for June, that's correct. Sorry. So I am just giving you July, so you know what's coming, because we didn't have a June update. And in July, also on July 20th, you will be hearing an appeal for the Western Agricultural Group of a notice of violation identified for operations of an animal kennel and cattery without a required conditional use permit. And that's what I have to report.
Thank you. Any items from the Commission that anybody wants to introduce? Nope? Seeing none, we're at the end of our meeting, and we are now adjourned.